We were doing something right, working.
Okay, well, it's four o'clock, so let's start. We'll call this work session to order. Heather, if you call a roll, please.
Mr. Granger. Mr. Boswell.
Here.
Mr. Clea. Beth.
Here.
Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Ms. Fowler.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Okay, so our first item is review of chapter six. This is our first, um, first time seeing this, so Carolyn?
Basically, what I did is I took Sarah's report and basically imported it into our format. So that's what I did. I've been through it and corrected some errors in, in grammar and, and wording, based on some comments I've received from a couple of, uh, board members. Basically, this first page is the current housing stock. And it goes on to say that in nineteen ninety, we had just under twelve thousand residents in the city, occupying about three thousand nine hundred and sixty units. In two thousand, the how, the number of housing units decreased slightly below thirty-eight eighty. However, by twenty-ten, we had grown back up to five thousand one hundred and seven, one hundred and seventy-six units, which represents about a thirty percent increase. According to the American Community Survey twenty-twelve and sixteen, the city now encompasses a total of five thousand seven hundred and, five thou- five thousand and seventy-eight units with just under fifteen thousand residents. James, while James City and York County have experienced a higher growth of this, over the same period, uh, the York County is growing about eighty percent to just over twenty-seven, twenty-seven thousand units, and James City has grown a hundred and twenty percent to thirty-two thousand units. Williamsburg has a, a smaller area than the two neighbors, as well as lower percentage of undeveloped land is why the, uh, we think we're not growing as fast as the two adjacent jurisdictions. Uh, also, you have on here is the housing stock, uh, little graph showing, uh, uh, the housing stock in the, in the city, which is showing that we've had a thirty percent growth since nineteen ninety. So unless anybody has any comments on that, I'll move on.
The next, I'm sorry, just, just, um, this, these are just my own personal. Are, in the appendix, does it actually tell you how we lost a hundred units in between ninety and two thousand, and how we lost another hundred units between twenty-ten and the American survey? Or is this just statistical variation, or?
I think it's just stats, but I can, I can check on that. All right, on the next page, it talks about the housing units, and their classification is that they're based on where they are occupied by their owners or rented to non-owners. The percentage of rental units in the city decreased slightly from nineteen ninety, when the rental rate was about fifty-six percent to just under fifty percent for the current housing stock. The owner occupancy rate has increased from thirty-two percent in nineteen ninety to forty-two percent, uh, in twenty-sixteen. It goes on to talk about the number of vacant units has varied over the years, but is now at four hundred and fifty-one units. Williamsburg has a smaller percentage of owner occupied units and a much larger percentage of rental units. The city also has a smaller inventory of vacant units. And of course, the city has an overall smaller housing stock, just over five thousand units compared to over six thousand in Upper York and thirty-two thousand in James City County. And also, there's a chart that shows, uh, the percentage of owners in the surrounding community.
Carolyn, I had a quick question here. When you said Upper York, is that just the more northern half of York County? Is there a reason that we excluded Lower York?
Because they are similar, they are adjacent to Williamsburg, and we are, we always look at Upper York and not count the whole section of, of York County.
Okay, just because it extends so far south.
The historic triangle, sort of.
And they sort of, they have Williamsburg addresses in Upper.
This gives you some comparison to other college towns. I'm not going to go through the whole, the stub it, but we've got Williamsburg, Lynchburg, and we're all pretty similar in, in characteristics, I think, of other college towns. This, in the American Community Survey, about half of all units are occupied by family households and a half are occupied by non-family households. Less than forty percent of the rental households are family units, with the majority of rental households, over forty percent, being single-person households. Which is kind of, it's not surprising to me, but it's probably unusual for, for a lot of jurisdictions. The final twenty percent of rental households are multi-person households where there, where there is no formal family or relationship. So that's that chapter. It doesn't look like that, uh, trying to convert it from, uh, PDF to PowerPoint makes the lines uncertain. The lines go wonky, so, but I think it looks okay on, on your report. On the next page, we've got rental units that are less likely to house families than owner occupied charts. So you've got the rental units, you've got the owner occupancy. It goes on to note that there are very few non-family households in owner occupied units. Over sixty percent of the occupied units have married couple families in, in them, with an additional four percent in other types of family households, such as single-parent families. The final third of the owner occupied units host single-person households. Williamsburg stands out from the other two historic triangle localities with respect to the proportion of single-person and non-family households. Once again, it's the distribution of household types is more consistent with the, with the, with the profiles of other college locations. And we've got a chart, another chart, uh, showing that, uh, percentages. It notes that Upper York has just over twenty percent non-family and single-personly, person households, and James City has twenty-five percent. It notes that Lynchburg has over forty percent and only slightly, slightly below Williamsburg's. However, in Lexington, Harrisonburg, and Charlottesville, over fifty percent of the households are single-person or non-family households. And a lot of this, Dr. Stafford reviewed with us a year ago, August now, I believe. I'm just trying to highlight some of the.
Yeah, and so part of that, for me, because I've been going back and forth between Sarah's, um, her report and this, and I guess, obviously, it's, uh, not footnoted, but annotated at the very beginning in red about this section was prepared by Sarah Stafford. To me, it seems like this is that report. And so, I mean, how much?
There's some, a little bit of the report, I think I attached the report.
Yeah.
With your, there's a, a small portion of the report that talks about other items.
Right, right.
Related to the housing section.
Yeah.
So I didn't include that.
Right, I, I, yes.
But I wanted to, everyone to see the whole report, too.
Yeah. So, and so I guess for me, it's like, um, well, since we're both faculty in the same department, I feel that it's, um, we, we either accept her report as this chapter, or we have to substantively do something else. But the idea that we're taking her work and, you know, we're working our way through her pages, page by page, like we're going to be editing this, that's a real disconnect in her intellectual property for me. And maybe that's because I'm a professor, I'm seeing that, but I see that as something. So we either accept this as their report for this chapter, and that's where it drives me to the recommendations. Like, the recommendations are, we support the recommendations of these two committees, which we have, actually haven't seen those report, those things. So to me, I, I'm not trying to stop the wagon that's going, but like.
I sent this to Dr. Stafford.
Uh-huh.
If she was okay with it, and she said she was fine with it, so.
Oh, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with how, you know, us accepting her report as this, just like we're accepting the Parks and Rec for the, that section. I guess my sense is that we have been massaging these other chapters in much greater detail because they were organically, you know, developed by you, frankly, you know, clearly, but by, you know, the city, um, or, uh, process. I just don't feel my, that we have that same ownership here. And maybe what is the issue that we should maybe spend our time talking about are more like the recommendations that come out of this than the page by page. But maybe I'm seeing the wrong thing.
I was gonna make the same comment.
What I was looking at, too, is there, are there things that we want to add that aren't included in her report?
Okay.
I have a few more updated numbers.
Okay.
On rentals.
Yep.
And the median, median income of houses that I can add to the end of the chapter or massage into this chapter if the commission wants, because most of her numbers were from the twenty-ten census.
Right.
And the American Community Survey, which is twenty-twelve and twenty-sixteen.
And she reported this out May of eighteen, so it was all done prior to that, and now we're knocking on the door of twenty-twenty. Okay, okay.
So I don't know if the commission wants me to sort of massage into?
I'd rather have as, as up-to-date data as possible, that's for sure.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Um, and, and, and I think it's fine to have a turn of the phrase, but, um, you know, I've already said my point, and people understood it.
So, I'm just thinking how I could do that. Because her data is based off census and so forth.
Right.
And they're in edit. I'll have to think how I add.
So is it possible to just have that be, you know, the preponderance of this chapter is her report, since it's been, it's not the full report, but it's the majority of the report, I mean. So there's been some minor grammar changes, and we can continue to do that. Maybe at the end of the chapter, there's more of a, sort of a epilogue kind of thing, that given this data, we have updated it to our twenty-nineteen data or eighteen data, or whatever it may be that we actually have access to. And that's like, like the page prior to the statement of recommendations or something?
And there, there might need to be something at the beginning, too, because there's multiple times in the report that references two thousand and sixteen, or two thousand and fourteen. So, so we need to say in the beginning, too, that while the report might mention two thousand and sixteen, the data and the graphs are as frequent to two thousand and eighteen, and they update developments since then. So, so something to book in the chapter, then, would, would work well.
And so, like, so Caleb's statement, will this red highlighted section stay in the actual comp plan? That this housing section was prepared by?
Yeah, I think.
Oh, good, 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 good.
Right.
I didn't know that was just a sort of a reference for us.
The appendix doesn't have an appendix number yet, because I don't know where to fall with all the other appendix.
Understood.
So once I know what appendix that is, if, I'll have that in there.
Okay, sure.
So for me, when I was going through this, um, you know, Sarah presented her report to us six months ago, something. And, you know, a thorough report, and we had some discussion. But to me, this, for me, was like, are there points of discussion or any quarrels that people have with the document that they now see as something that we need to think about more seriously? Or that's more concerning for us relative to, she was doing this for the Realtor organization, so it was Williamsburg, James City County, York, you know, more broadly?
So, s- small point on that. We were saying before, before you arrived, Elaine, that we might add drone photos into the chapter. Uh, they're being taken this week.
It won't be in this chapter, I don't think. I think they'll be in the other chapters.
Okay, okay, but the updated photos will be. Because I know in the two thousand and thirteen version, the housing chapter had photos of High Street or, or certain neighborhoods, so as long as those are, are updated somewhere.
Well, we split up the neighborhoods and the housing, remember? So, so this is, this is just the housing section, the neighborhood section we've looked at. And yes, we will have new.
Those have the updated ones.
Photos for the neighborhood chapter.
Done that, has the drone thing happened?
She's just about finished. She did about half of them, three weeks ago. Something happened with the camera on the drone. She had to send it away and get it fixed, and then she told me she would hope to be finished by the end of this week. So I should have, I think I've got her doing all different areas of the city, mainly the streets that we want it better. Photos with actual cars on, uh, some, uh, parks, some different, just different neighborhoods in the city. So I should be getting those, and then those will go into different chapters that we've probably already looked at.
Okay, neighborhoods.
The streets, it'll be the neighborhoods, it'll be those types of things. And now that I've got the pictometry, I can also take some cool pictures of the neighborhoods, similar to what you saw, what you've seen in the Parks and Recs chapter I gave you. So those were, were pictures that I cut out, I did from pictometry, so. I was going to see if you guys like those photos, if they were clear enough for you. You know, we'll, we'll be adding a lot more photos.
So, Elaine, you had said that, um, the, I mean, this is, this is just a lot of data, a lot of information. And I, I, you know, I, I accept this as it is, but I think the recommendations, as you, as you pointed out, are really where we, you know, we, we need to get our.
We've been here before.
Put our stamp on, on that, yeah.
And, and perhaps if, if some of the information in here, um, isn't direct from her report, we put that in a different font, so that.
Yeah, all of this is directly from hers, except for the recommendations.
Okay.
And I just put a couple of recommendations to get you started. I'm sure the commission would like to add, but the two recommendations I put at the end are implement the rec, the recommendations from the Neighborhood Balance Committee and implement the recommendations from the Workforce Affordability Housing Work Group. Uh, the Neighborhood Balance Committee had their second meeting this week, so we're well into that. And we're looking to possibly report out in May to council. So I think the comp plan and that jail pretty well. Workforce affordability housing was presented to council last, this month, and will, that committee will start probably within the next month or two. So I think that committee also is looking to finish up in the middle of, um, next year, which will work well with our comp plan. One thing I did want to mention on the census information that's in here, you know, the new census is starting up.
Yes.
Right now.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, similar, not to what we've typically done in the past this year. We have a internal committee who is trying to get better counts from, uh, citizens in, uh, in Williamsburg. So Betsy Fowler, um, with the, with the library is heading up that committee. Myself is on it, uh, several other individuals. We are trying to get a campaign out to get better participation in the, in the census. A lot of information on the city website. Come up with a, uh, count, uh, something count, like, uh, Cookie Monster, but the count.
Oh.
Count, uh, twenty-twenty or something like that. We've got, uh, an individual on the committee who's willing to dress up as a count and, uh, be in the parades and sort of the kid for the, for the whole committee. So I think you, this year, we, we had several areas that really didn't get very good participation. So we're getting, uh, individuals or church groups who would be good to reach out to certain communities. Let me know, shoot me a name and an address. On the list. What's different this year is you're not going to get mailing. Basically done by, you'll get an email that says, go to the, you'll get a piece of mail that says, go to this website and fill it out.
Okay.
Which is very, it's concerning that.
Yeah, you're not in the senior population, and people don't have access to computers easily or internet.
That's why we have the library involved this, this year, because they have a lot of computers that individuals can use. So that's why it's important that we get as many individuals, churches, groups and those types of things to spread the word that, uh, if you don't turn in one for your address, then the census individuals will become knocking on the door and with little iPads and those kind of things to help you, uh, help individuals fill one out. But it is going to be a little different this year in that you're not going to get a paper copy to fill out. That's concerning to not only staff, but the census folks, too, is how well that's going to be received by individuals. Because like you said, some of the seniors don't have computers, don't know how to use computers. I think there's a phone line, too, that you can call in. And if you don't want to do a computer, you can call in on the phone line and answer the questions over the phone.
And a lot, and, and there's also a lot, a segment of folks who feel that their data privacy is not so secure online, you know, that there's other things can be captured.
There's a whole host of.
So, I, and, so, so bringing, maybe bringing us back here to these recommendations. For me, the takeaway is that the report that Sarah did is great, and your interpretation of the parts of it that are, for us, are spot-on, and it's great. And I think the graphics look great in, in our format. I have, you know, all that kind of stuff. But to me, like, the recommendations, while those recommendations are fine, and I trust my fellow citizens who are on these committees and staff, and all that kind of stuff. To me, it's like, this is where, for me, there's, just me. There should be some positive, active statements by the Planning Commission that, you know, we support some of the issues that are brought up in this chapter, um, if we do. Um, some of the issues of having a diversity of housing options so that we can support the kind of community we want. So I mean, to me, it's, you know, the character of the community is intertwined with housing stock, and economic development is intertwined with housing stock. And how all those things, you know, fit together is part of what the rec, to me, some of the recommendations that we should have versus just simply saying.
Right.
Great, Dr. Stafford, although I've never called her that in my life. But great, great for Sarah, great report, I, I really like the report, and our recommendations are, are these other committees. So I, for me, I'd like to see what other comments people have.
This just.
Yeah, you know, what other people have with regard to those kinds of things. You know, the vibrancy of our communities depend upon having a stock of, a diversity stock of housing and all that other kind of stuff.
So I'm happy to take down recommendations.
Do we want to start with the idea of affordable housing? And think about how we can add additional recommendations beyond just implement, implementing the workforce affordability, um, workgroups and stuff?
I guess I could say something like, um, the Planning Commission recognizes that there's a demand for affordable housing and it exceeds supply right now, and also recognizes that the population of Williamsburg will be growing significantly in the next few years. Uh, we will consider developments that can, um, satisfy demand across the income spectrum. I mean, something along those lines, just saying that we recognize there's a need for something, and, and we are mindful of that, and, and will work towards, um, satisfying that.
And, and relating to housing, um, and that's something that came through, I believe, city council, at least, um, or the city manager's office, that, um, that the city is, once again, looking at a program that, that I believe they had like thirty years ago of, um, helping, and I think this is something we want more broadly stated, but helping people, actually helping city staff afford to live in the city, you know? And so the idea of having, you know, programs that, uh, allow people to creatively finance, or, I mean, we're not talking about giving away housing or those kinds of things, but that, that there are cooperative relationships. The college used to have these back in the day as well, for faculty to be able to afford housing and things like that.
Florida Williamsburg used to do that as well.
Right, and that these are, these are the kinds of programs that were popular in the sixties and seventies. Fell out of favor for whatever reasons, but, you know, we are now seeing crisis points and where people are spending, you know, sixty percent of their salary on housing or else commuting, you know, an hour to get to their, you know, their jobs and, you know.
I remember we had a comment months ago from an interpreter at CW who said, I, I commute forty minutes every single day so that I can work here in the city. And there's a point in, in the study, too, which says those, uh, working at minimum wage cannot afford, uh, even, even the lowest echelon of housing here.
Right. Virgin motel, it's too expensive.
Yeah. And to me, that, that is a piece that fits into the whole vibrancy of lots of different parts of, of our discussions, or different chapters of our plan. But this is where, I guess, we need to reiterate some of those things.
It, it's, it's virtually impossible, I would think, to have a balanced and diverse community if you don't have a balanced and diverse housing stock. Even though Caleb indicated that there is a demand, right? I think there's a need, there's a greater need than there is a demand right now, because there are people who have just given up on trying to find a, a place to live in Williamsburg, who are working here. And, uh, the need is, is without question. So, finding, finding some language to put in there about making sure that it's, it's balanced and that all economic income levels are, are welcome and invited to live in.
And then we can explore ways to help people do this. Both the developers who have to make money, and, uh, the people who need to buy places or rent, some kind of help.
Yeah, and, and because, I mean, it also, for me, just thinking about how people commute, I mean, a lot of the staff at the college do not, do not live nearby. And, you know, they also don't necessarily make so much money, so they don't have the newest cars. And so if their cars break down, then our transportation isn't that great to allow people to use public transportation. So, you know, you may lose your jobs because your car is laid up for a few days. And if you lived within a mile or two, you could walk to, you know.
And we're almost built out in some areas.
Oh, my gosh, yes.
And so, you know, it's be difficult just finding the real estate to do that. And places that, where we want it.
Right, right.
But how do we deal with things like, uh, Holly Hills Carriage Homes? Where the initial response from the, from the neighbors was, not in my backyard. These houses aren't nice enough, we need something more expensive. Because I don't want people living in houses next to me that aren't as expensive as mine.
There's a lot of that around here, yeah.
There's a whole lot of that around here.
We had that at, at, uh, Park White, too, at the, the, I mean, it was the same thing. It's not just, you know, it's not just Holly Hills, it's, it's, you know, any, anywhere you put it, there's going to be people who say, oh, I don't want those people, you know, without that perception there.
Yeah, I think. I just did a, uh, a study of all the neighborhoods in the city. And I took the, the property and the houses, the values, the ones that have a, actual units on them, by each neighborhood, and came up with an average by neighborhood. Probably put that in here. And of the neighborhoods we had, six were affordable. The family that had a medium income.
Well, I, we have to think about the.
They were.
A medium income.
Medium income, fifty, what is our median income? Fifty-four thousand a year for a family.
Fifty-four, yeah.
Fifty-two thousand a year for a family. It was Wales, Highland Park, Pa, uh, Palatan Park, Skipwith, On the Edge, uh, Strawberry Plains, and there was one more. But they were the only ones that a family with a medium income could afford to live in, move into the city, to own a home.
Right.
So.
And that's, and that's just the market. I mean, the, the supply, yeah, I mean, because it's desirable, everybody, as soon as you move outside of our, what, what do you call it, Elaine, our turkey, uh? You cross out, and, and, you know, and the prices, uh, the prices tend to, tend to go down.
Because the houses in, in all those other neighborhoods were three-fifty and more.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I, we, we've got to look at more of the conversions. Um, but even, as, as you said, the conversions are, it's still a thousand dollars a month. But what we have to look at is not, you know, those are not, we're, we're talking about affordable, we're not talking about, you know, the, the minimum wage. We're talking about the interpreter, the CW interpreters, and we're talking about the, you know, schoolteachers, and, you know, new schoolteachers, and police, and, and firemen, and, you know, the people that we want to be living here. So there's, there's got to be a way to get, you know, get the message out so people understand who it is that we're talking about providing this housing for, you know? I, I think if they realize, oh, it's the, you know, it's, it's, it might be nice to have a police officer living, you know, a block away or something like that, we, we might get over that, um, not in my backyard, as, as Greg mentioned.
What I hear from developers, too, is that the cost of land is so high.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and I don't, I don't know so much that it's a reflection of the people living there, it's the value and the impact on their, on their, their property value if, if the lower-income homes are next door.
That's, that's part of it.
Yeah.
But I've heard the other part of it, too. So it's, it just depends on who you're, you know, who's doing the complaining.
But the, the more examples of diversity of value, I think creates a comfort that diversity of value does not necessarily mean it's going to devalue mine.
I think one thing we probably need to discuss is what other jurisdictions and cities are doing is land what they call granny flats.
Along what's?
Granny flats.
Granny flats, converting your two-car garage, it's an independent building, into actually a standalone house. On this, this, all that, you know, as, in the Wall Street Journal, that, that's frequently talked about. And, and there are certain area, I mean, certain areas, uh, like in California, where the land values are so high, that a lot of neigh, cities like ours that had, used to have fairly, very restrictive, uh, restrictive ordinances have allowed that just to be able to have this infill. Um, and there's now, you know, a good number of examples that I've seen where people have made a pretty nice granny flat, you know? But you don't have to, it isn't like your mother-in-law suite, that you have to have a mother-in-law who's eighty years old living it, or you can actually rent it out. eighty years old having it. Or you can actually rent it out. But examples where people have made these things and made them really nice because they plan to move into them themselves and rent the big house, you know, once the kids have left.
That's what I was going to say. A single elderly person would live in the smaller unit and rent out the larger house and then you still have an owner occupied.
Right.
A person that lives on the property. So that's, that's something that we need to think about. Do we want to investigate that? Do we want to?
Because there are a few that are grandfathered.
Further or?
There's a few that are grandfathered and they haven't destroyed the community, you know. So the idea that, I mean, and obviously that's not part of the comprehensive plan, but that could be something that we recommend, you know, a study of alternative housing options, right?
Yeah, exploring that, yeah.
I, I mean, I think it would also be worthwhile that we study the impact of, I mean, it's not going to, it's not going to be the lollipop that saves everything here, but when we're talking about, you know, public service workers, teachers, fire, you know, officers, things like that, you know, we do allow tax abatements for, you know, veterans or, you know, handicapped or elderly in various categories. So I mean, there's other communities will give tax abatement for people who are public service workers. And that could be a couple thousand dollars a year. I mean, it's how you cobble together, how it makes it work, you know?
Yeah.
You know?
And that's what I'm pretty sure the affordability task forces want to look at because there are programs with the state that you can get some assistance for.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Because the Housing Director and I have already met with some of the state individuals and there are different types of programs that may be able to give us some relief, if nothing else, to do the studies.
Right, right. And there's also, I mean, it doesn't, it isn't maybe so tied to housing, but just affordability of living and vibrancy. Not only is there a tax abatement programs, but it is possible for localities to tap into federal funds to pay back student loans for people who are working in public service positions. And if that, it's, and, and, you know, as an economist, money is money. It's lots of different pots of money. You can put it together and that's how you pay your mortgage, you know? Whether it's because you don't have to pay your student loan, now you can pay your mortgage, or you don't have to pay taxes, now you pay your mortgage. I mean, so that there's lots of different ways of thinking about how to have folks who are, you know, college educated, doing good work in our community and just don't quite make the salary. But if there were abatements and other tax credits or other things, that that might work. So I mean, I, I think we should study those things, not hold up, hold the comprehensive plan hostage to them, but reiterate, reiterate or, you know, iterate some of those things. They may be part of the recommendations of these other groups, but somehow, some of these things are going to be seen as revolutionary or something like that by some folks. The more people who say, "Oh, that might be worth looking at," the better.
I looked at the, one of the property the city owns is over ten acres over by Berkeley Middle School.
Oh, yeah, right, sure.
Always thought that would be a cool site to do a tiny lot, tiny house size.
Oh, yeah.
Property for workforce housing. Build the small houses on small lots, one bedrooms.
Yep.
And the reason for that is to keep the turnover. So if someone doesn't buy and live in it for twenty, thirty years, you want to be able to have that stock available for people to move out of. Make it so that the, maybe the Housing Authority builds it, runs it, maintains the grounds and those kinds of things. Make it a small, you know, eight hundred, nine hundred square foot home. No big yard so that you can have sheds and hatch garages and those kind of things and just see how many you can get on there.
Yep.
Make a big difference.
Yep.
Gary in Highland Park as well would be very good for that.
How do we feel about accessory buildings, going back and looking at them so that they can become little granny flats, if you will, but I think that can help with the affordability of, of a house. If you can convert your garage to an apartment and have a grad student or a, a young couples live in there. I think that can make it more affordable for people to buy a home as well as provide that home for that starter couple or that individual who's just moving here and starting off in, in a job.
I, I definitely think that's worth us looking into. And I think one thing that might be worth including is not just ones that could be sort of, you know, certainly there are ones that are already grandfathered, but not something where the structure even has to be there already, but where someone could intentionally say, "I'm going to buy this four hundred thousand dollar home that I couldn't otherwise afford because I'm then going to add an eighty thousand dollar accessory dwelling that I'm going to rent out," you know, or something like that.
And just make sure you can't rent both of them.
Right.
Sure. Oh, yeah. Certain stipulations that we want, of course.
Yeah.
But I think just even recommending exploring this idea is a good step.
Yeah, and.
And the owner could conceivably live in either one.
Correct, yes, yes.
I, I, I think that's, that's a, that's a great win on, for both sides.
I agree.
Problem, the problem, of course, is if you can't afford the four hundred, you're not going to get a mortgage to be able to buy it.
And a construction loan.
Yeah, and, yeah, years later, I'm going to have this thing built. You know, that, that's not, not going to fly.
I, I think this is a really interesting idea. Carolyn, I'm curious to get your thoughts if you think there would be a significant amount of interest. Because we approved and council approved the idea for Airbnbs in the city months ago, and I don't think we've had a single applicant. We've had one? So we've had, we've had one, but it's been opened up?
One approved and one denied.
Okay, so we've had two applications. Do you think there would be a more interest in a permanent structure and having this rather than a temporary basis on a permanent basis? Or would it be?
Some neighborhoods will see that as a plus and some neighborhoods will not take kindly to rental units.
Right.
That's my feeling from.
Oh, yeah.
On the Neighborhood Relations Committee and being working in the city for twenty-eight years, there's got to be a lot of careful thought about how we go about do that. Doing that, maybe we do test case in certain areas or something and say, "You can do an overlay district and you can try it and see how it works," rather than say, "City's open to it."
Oh, golly, no, no. And, and obviously there are other cities that have already done this and, and cities in the Northeast and in California and places where property is really pricey and all that, so that, you know.
There are other cities who say, "Single-family dwellings aren't permitted anymore."
Yep.
That's the new trend.
Yeah.
That single-family dwellings get converted into duplexes and multiple houses because of the need.
I know the city tracks noise complaints and violations and such. Do they distinguish between places where there is an owner occupant and an accessory building? With the noise complaint? Because I, I think that would be an interesting statistic to see how many places where there's a, an owner and, and a primary house and then there's somebody living in an accessory building.
Ninety-five percent of them are renters, from my knowledge.
But not?
The complaints coming from a house that's a rental, not an owner occupied. I think this year I might have one that was an owner occupied house.
Right, but if, if someone has an accessory building and.
And the complaint, and, and the police were called because of the party by the renters.
I don't think we have any accessory buildings.
Would the police just, uh, separate out that it wasn't, you know?
I don't think there were any accessory buildings.
Family was the renter.
Right, that's, that's, that's the point that I'm, I'm trying to make. Because if there's an owner who's living there, then they're paying attention. And they can deal with the, the issue when it comes up.
Right.
So that.
First line of the.
Your hopes of the statistic would be low if there are being noise complaints.
I would think it would be low to nonexistent, yes.
Yeah. And I mean, and I think that that goes for, at least in my neighborhood, there are lots of, you know, basement apartments and other kinds of things which are finally getting on the books, but have lived, people have lived in some of these things for twenty, thirty years. But when the family that's owned the house for thirty years is upstairs, the, you know, sometimes they're families, actually. Other times they're with other arrangements, but, I mean, the house is operating as a unit, you know. It's not, it's not the same as when I went out on Sunday morning to find one of my neighbor houses having more solo cups on their front and backyard than I thought Food Lion even stopped. The, the whole yard was red.
I think the difference comes in the play. The difference comes in the play too. In that instance, they're usually not an issue. But if there are two rental units there.
Oh, right.
It's a little different.
All right.
You might have a good tenant for five years and all of a sudden you get a bad tenant that's a bad neighbor. So that's, and it's hard to regulate that.
But i- if we, if we can somehow measure and perhaps change the view of people that, "Oh, well, it's an accessory building that's going to be a rental. That's a bad thing," to, "It's an owner occupied main property with an accessory building. We don't have any history of, of bad performance in those." So the community might want to embrace them instead of churning them.
I think a, a piece of information that is relevant to the broader affordable housing discussion that we're having that we, we don't really have, and it, maybe it will take some creative thinking to get us to that information, but it's basically, what are the next steps with allowing or disallowing if we choose more motel conversions into affordable housing? What's the limit? And I don't know how we define that, right? That's part of a discussion. But I think that's a piece of data that we might want to recommend we look into over the next year or two is, you know, when we go to make the next decision about raising the cap or not raising the cap, or there's a place that, well, you know, however many units are left, they want to take them all. What, you know, what, what is the impact of, you know, these sorts of choices that we're, we're making as a body?
Increase the cap twice that I'm, I'm aware of.
I remember as well.
And so, yeah. Because, I mean, as much as that is a stock of housing, whether it was a hotel or now a, a small apartment, I mean, the super majority of those conversions remain a tricked-out hotel room.
Yes.
You know, and that's pretty small conditions when I think up to three people can live in that tricked-out hotel room. And they're not big hotel rooms because they're old-style hotels, you know?
I can provide you a map generally of hotels, their location.
Sure.
That's easily done.
Sure, oh, yeah. I'm just thinking in terms of.
Just to give you where they are.
Right.
And the vacant ones, like.
To look at and think about.
Yeah.
I can do that and just send that to the commission, not as part of a, of this, but just give you that information.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking as a long-term thing that would be interesting to have some scenarios built in as some sort of analysis of, well, if, you know, if we take this property offline in terms of the property, the commercial hotel motel tax revenue, perhaps it's not generating much to begin with. So perhaps there isn't much impact, but we don't, we don't always know this with every, every application. And I think it would drive our thinking about the, the capacity, whether or not we want to raise that as well if we had some hard data to back it up.
Yeah, the occupancy rate, what was the occupancy rate of, of the last, wasn't it about twenty, was he running about twenty, twenty percent?
Six percent or something?
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, they, they obviously can't make money. So I don't, I don't know what their break-even point is.
Right.
Seventy, eighty, somewhere in that range, I think. But any, anything that's running below that, they're going to be looking for, for, for some kind of option.
And then the math gets really complicated because if we don't have people who live in our community, who can work in our community, then we're not going to be able to service the tourists when they do show up.
Or me when I want to go out to dinner.
Well, Midtown Road's going to have an impact, but it's just too, too soon to tell.
Right.
You know, when, when it pulls people out of the, out of the rental, rental market.
It'd be groundbreaking for that.
Yeah, yeah.
They're still looking to.
So do we, do we know? It's, it's still too early, though?
Still looking to be, I think you said, uh, commercial in early spring of 2020 with residential units, early summer 2020?
I think it's 2021.
I think 2021, I mean, 2021.
Early 21 and 21. Late spring, early, I think is what.
So, so there, I mean, with the, with the focus on students being there, it's the fall of 21, the 21, 22 academic year.
Two hundred and forty units, two hundred and twenty units, six hundred and forty.
That, that'll have an impact on the market.
Part of the problem with the market too is that in older neighborhoods, they have older homes, rented for a long time. And it's not cheap to have, to do the upgrades. I mean, you got to upgrade, Ranger knows, he's bought a few of them and had to do it, upgrade the electrical, the heating and cooling systems, bathrooms, the kitchens, and then fixing the exteriors, painting and new roofs usually. So as you know, you, you're paying over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a home. And then you're looking at these major improvements, which also makes it hard for families to move in.
So the town I used to live in in Florida, people, because the location was so desirable, people would buy houses and, and tear them down. And that's, that's the kind of thing that you would, that would, that enhances the value. I mean, there, people would pay three, four, five million dollars, tear the house down and build a twenty, a thirty-year-old house, tear it down and build a new one. And it seems like, I mean, we, we've seen some of that. We see, I didn't do that. We've seen some of that.
Go to Springfield.
We've seen some of that around here, though.
But I.
Right, and, yeah, and they do that, and they do that, but that's, but that's.
Trend is changing.
Is it?
Because the housing size is going, is getting smaller now.
Well, it doesn't have to be a giant house, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying, because what we, what we have here, what's our problem, our blessing and a curse is location. And people want this location, just like the, the CW Scotland Street issue, you know, we, he wants that primo location. But a block or two away is still a primo location.
But you're not going to be able to get families, young families, in workforce housing and people who want to live in the city to be able to afford to do that. You're making that gap even larger.
No, but it, but it, but, no, but it, it's not, it's not, yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking workforce housing now. I'm just talking about, about people who want to live in the city and who want to, the, the option, instead of just rehabbing, you know, broken down, beat-up houses, is just to tear them down and build a new, build new houses, maybe on two lots, you know, that kind of thing. And there are people who have the funds to do that.
Right, kind of like the old CMP building. But then in ten years, when that person moves to assisted living, you've got a house that's huge and very well-built and nobody's going to be able to buy it anywhere close to what it was.
We've had someone do that on Harrison Avenue, on Harrison Avenue, one point three million dollars.
Yep.
Took, bought a house, tore it down, and he can't sell it. He told me last night and I'm going to have to go reduce it considerably to even see if I can sell the house now.
Well, because, yeah, because he overbuilt. But I'm, you're, you're talking about the trend. But anyway, that's just something to, you know, as, as a, a separate option that, that does work in a lot of other places.
He was going to do the same thing with the one behind it too, I think.
Well, that, he went back to ARB last night to build a considerably smaller addition because the big addition, the big house behind it is not selling.
Yeah.
So he's looking to renovate the existing house and put a smaller addition on rather than that huge addition. For that very reason, he's overbuilding the neighborhood.
Um, you mentioned ARB. How, you, you might be a, a great source of this in general. How much do we think ARB affects people being willing to, to buy a house in a neighborhood and, and invest in, in it with the rehab and, and such that might come along with it as far as putting in new building materials and things like that?
I think it's a factor, don't you think?
I don't think it's as big a factor as the interior.
As some people in Harrison Avenue might think. But, and that, that's a, that house is a good example. And, uh, I've tear down one to, to, to build another and you can't unload it. I think the restrictions are, are not so onerous that they would keep people from buying a house and refurbishing because it's not that bad, I don't think. And you got some data on building materials and?
Yep, I'm getting.
Stuff like that.
That contractor to give me some cost estimates on immatious siding, windows, roofing. Uh, and architect giving me prices on the same types of materials because there's another house that's being renovated over on South England Street that I can use them. It's like I said, most of the cost, costly, costly things are interior.
Right.
Bathrooms, the refurbishment of kitchens and cooling systems and insulation and all those things that are interior that the Architecture Review Board doesn't regulate that are expensive. You can go and buy a wood siding house and there might be a, a few boards, ten boards or replace the wood siding and paint over it. And it's fairly cheap except for painting. You can replace the roof fairly easily in Architectural Review District unless it's a slate roof that's in excellent condition and most people aren't going to touch that anyway. And put a, a architectural grade shingle. I mean, that's fairly common anymore.
It's a misconception that it's, that. It's a misconception that it's, that old wood windows are a detriment. Actually, it's cheaper to fix them and make them work. And they'll last longer than buying something, as Jeff pointed out, that was made in Iowa, not around here. And, you know, it's not, doesn't really take much. Not paying a contractor too much to stick it into a hole. So you get a contractor and there are some that can't take the windows, take them apart, fix them, put them back, they work. They're made out of wood that's, that's decent wood, it's not going to rot, put a storm on it. You've got the same arf factor, if not better, and you've got a much better looking and more long-lasting window. And it's just educating people to that sort of thing.
And a lot of times it's the, the caulking around the window, that's the, the problem. A lot of folks just seal them up by painting them. You've got to undo that. We have individuals who will dip them even, get all the old lead paint off them, bring them back, paint them over, install them and they work wonderfully. I mean, I have old wood windows in my house. And some of my neighbors are replacing theirs. And I said, I'm not replacing mine. I had seven-year-old windows in my house in Seasons Trace that were aluminum clad wood. And within seven years, the seals broke and they started to fog up. So when I start, when I had to sell my house, I had to replace those windows, which were less than 10 years old. With new windows for the ones that fogged over. So, but.
Windows in my house are 115 years old.
On the exterior or storms on the interiors.
They're fine.
It's not that expensive.
So we were talking about the, the, the small houses in, you know, the, the, the close-in subdivision. So, so the rehab and all of that is the kind of thing that Elaine was talking about. You know, providing low or no interest loans to, you know, specify, you know, target to, you know, city employees and CW and, and college employees. I mean, that's exactly who. We want to be living in those, right?
The city has certain number of houses that the city owns throughout the city and currently the housing authority has taken over that, those homes. And we are renting those homes to city employees. That's a start for being able to have city employees live in the city, whereas before they couldn't afford to.
I think we, I mean, my, my perspective is that we want to increase ownership rather than increasing, increase rentals. And so, um, you know, that, that kind of thing that makes these houses affordable to people who want to buy them and, and do the necessary repairs, uh, seems like a, you know, something to, to study.
So in putting pen to paper, um, back to the comp plan, Caroline, after listening to all these ideas, does the comment, does the recommendation look something like? We recommend a study on the various methods of reaching affordable housing. I mean, that, that study sort of already exists, but I'd just like to wordsmith the actual language which we might use.
And this is the first draft of our seeing this.
Right, right.
Um, so we will, so I mean, the, the conversation that we've had for the past half hour, I know that Heather and Caroline have been taking notes on this though. And you could come back at, at the draft two stage with some, you know.
Right.
You don't have to craft the recommendations.
And if you have specifics that you think about tonight or tomorrow, you could just shoot me an email with it. I'm happy to.
Right. Because part of, I mean, part of what comes out of the comp plan, you know, a whole host of new ordinances that have to be passed over the course of a year's time or whatever. But also the big picture things that we can think about, you know, in the next year or two. But having it articulated here gives us the gravitas to then say, we have to have these meetings and have this community discussion.
And, and critical to that is the community discussion for the reasons that Greg was talking about earlier.
I mean, when places like, you know, Van Tucket or Martha's Vineyard or Palm Springs, California, I mean, you know, are doing some of these things and they have their ARB places, all that kind of stuff, definitely. I mean, you know.
Learn from. That's why I think some of these two studies at the end, I think will.
Yeah.
Invoke a community discussion on the recommendations that possibly would come out of these studies.
So I, I understand as a, as a commission that we should say. We should mimic what these studies are going for, but I think in anything that we would add to the recommendations. Would already be discussed in the neighborhood balance or the workforce study. So, so we, we could add something that says we, we support, uh, new and, and innovative ideas. But I, I think that's what these studies are going to do. So I think in ours would, would more just be saying, we trust in the committees. Rather than we are providing something new here in this idea. Cause I think the, the studies will, will come back with some of these ideas which we've discussed already.
Whereas the studies will come back possibly with recommendations to our zoning regulations, which has to come through the commission.
Right, right.
And we could also make recommendations to them as they are, you know, as this'll, this'll be going.
Okay, so Caroline has moved on to our next chapter, which I take, I take as the indication that we should go on to our next thing. But no, I think we've had enough discussion for now, as, as this is our first draft. According to our agenda, um, we need to have at least open. Sorry.
It's a question.
Oh, so we need to have an open forum. Keith, yes? Oh. Sir, it's probably defined in the appendix.
Uh, it's, uh. Individuals related by blood, adoption, marriage and guardianship. And it's a big, long description of who all is in there. We also define a family as three. And we also say, because we have occupancy limits. Yeah, we do not have a non-family definition.
So when we've referenced non-family, it's.
It's in.
The black hole that is, whatever doesn't include this thing, but having it stated explicitly somewhere would be great. It's probably in the appendix is where the definitions would be. Any other open forum comments? Okay, well then we'll go on to, uh, chapter 11, which is our parks chapter.
Yeah, this is just part of that chapter. What I did, it was took the existing chapter and rewrote it somewhat. I put the mission statement and the vision for the parks and recreation in there. Then I existly, basically went in there and looked at the existing facilities, updated it to. Took, this is our new map showing. Divided it into passive community. What I did a little different is I named the park and I gave the address with our digital. If anybody wanted to go there. Bicentennial Park might not get you there, but. Find it, updated the acreages, put in the maps. Basically updated the section to conform to that. Thing I wanted to mention, I put the passive parks as bicentennial, college, redoubt. And city square. The community parks are Kiwanis Park and Quarter Path Park. Maps. I'm going to do pictures. Pretty well.
Yeah, they do. It's fairly impressive that there are actually eleven parks in a city of 5,000 acres.
One thing I did want to mention. Parks. I took James Blair and Matthew Whaley and put them in under the other facilities. Parks, they were shown as sort of in the old. Would you like a?
Can I, can I just, can I just back up? So, so city square park, what's out here? It's considered to be a passive park. That's the most unpassive park of almost every park that's here in, in the city. I mean, every weekend, there's something going on, every Friday morning.
Want to move it to a community park maybe?
The commit, the kids are out there on the lawn with the librarians, there's weddings, every, you know, so it seems like, I think I understand that, like, there's not a swing set there. But, but when it's, you know, compared to like bicentennial park, which people walk their dogs through, I guess. And Capital Landing where people sit in a car and look at the water and the.
Redoubt where nobody ever goes.
Right. I mean, that, that city square park is this vibrant center of activity, actually. So.
It is.
I didn't want to put it in a neighborhood park.
No.
Really not that.
I like community parks.
Community park, yeah. Cause I mean, it's really quite.
Community building.
It is, uh, actively, um, you know, scheduled kind of place.
One thing I wanted to mention. Talk about. Passive parks that basically aren't constructed. Give you a heads up that there will be a developer coming in next month for our work session. Looking at the property across the street from the Oaks.
Oh, yep.
For a. Senior development. And then spoke to staff, I said, we're currently in the comp plan update. It shows it as environmentally sensitive. It is zone RS1 currently. It's going to need a comp plan change. It's also going to need a zoning text change. Money. It would be nice maybe if you could come to the commission. Heads up of what they're talking about. No way that.
Yeah, that park's been on the, it's been passively on the market for like 20 years, it seems like.
Yes, a long time.
It's probably multifamily type.
Yes, it's a, uh, I want to say it's an assisted living, it's not a nursing home.
Right.
Uh, they're looking at putting that type of facility at the area that has the most land mass that's developable. And then the other portions are residential lots. I haven't seen the diagram. I've given them some, uh, heads up that if you're going to go in and clear cut. Bill and those kinds of things, I don't think the city's going to look favorably at that.
Oh, they're going to just look.
Large retaining walls to make things happen. This.
Need to look across the street and see how well the Oaks fits in with the terrain and, and the woods.
But if you do something that blends in with the environment, you may have a better chance of getting favorable response. I don't know what they're going to bring yet. I will probably see it before you see it. Up since we're looking at this section. I figured it would be a good opportunity for someone to talk about that piece of property. Should like overview of what they're proposing and if possibly we want to change that designation in the comp plan and. So on these ones, the Capital Landing Park is the one that. I will put a. General area in here. The College Creek Parks, of course, we have the College Landing. All right. And we have the College Creek Nature Area, which is talking about. We also have the. National Park Service. Possibly seeing that the park service. Sell it to us, but I think. Possibly taking that. Property on the other side.
That'd be great.
You have a connection. Parkway, which possibly could be for bikers. The trail, the boat trail. That, that could possibly be a trailhead. Also could come back into town. That park across College Creek can come. This is just the first part of this chapter.
Can I ask you a question before you go? Um, you, you confused me on something. You were talking about that space across from the Oaks, but then you say College Creek Conservation Area is what you were just talking about, and that's something different.
Yes.
So, so.
College Creek Nature Area, 45 acre undeveloped area bordered by South Henry, Wright 1999 in College Creek.
Right.
The area that that developer is looking.
But the College Creek Conservation Area, hasn't that been changed? Isn't that, wasn't the name of that changed? The 105 acres?
Yes, the 105 acres is the piece that's at the back of Holly Hills.
I know, I back up to it on two sides, but I'm just saying, I thought that name had been changed. Isn't it Green Springs or something? I, I think it's been changed.
I'll check.
Yeah, check on that.
Backyard.
Yes, it's, it's been changed in my backyard.
What I plan to do with the rest of the chapter is take the study that was done by the Parks and Recreation, take the highlights out of that. This document and attach the study as an appendix to the comp plan. So if someone wants to see the whole, because a lot of the data in that study. Relates back to data that we put in other portions of the plans. I don't think we need to copy all of that in here. But take the recommendations and high points of that study, put it in as part of this document and attach the append, as in an appendix, if someone wants to see what that study says. That's my plan to finish this chapter.
There's a lot of duplicate data between that and.
Yes.
And it'd be interesting to see if it's.
So basically this was my first cut at trying to rewrite it, put in some new maps, make it look a little better, I think, and a little more friendly. And I probably will add some more pictures once I get my. This chapter.
Would you prefer us then to hold our conversation on recommendations until after you've been able to incorporate those highlights that they can drive?
Yeah, I think the recommendations part is, I didn't put any in here because I'm sure the recommendations, a lot of them are going to tie into the study.
Sure.
On what the study recommended. Uh, this was an attempt to start this chapter and get you something and see. Makes sense to. Right of the whole section. Apps and. Apps or. General observations and comments.
One op, going back to the College Creek Nature Area, um, which I made a comment of, it's a parcel that's been passively on the market for 20 years, it seems like. And part of your recommendation here is that the col, the, the city should investigate acquiring the property. When I read that, I'm like, yeah, makes perfect sense, you know? But now that you're saying that there's a potential investor or developer, I don't want it to, you know, it, somebody owns that property, you know? And I don't want us to be, I, I'm, I'm conflicted that we might be perceived as this is a hostile statement to this potential developer. You know, I was totally in agreement with this statement before I, I now hear this.
That's why I'm.
So I, I definitely, I mean, I definitely like to hear from this person because if. If we think that if there is a viable, um, development, then I wouldn't want that to be, I wouldn't want the current statement to be in the comp plan because that would be.
Right.
For us, the grounds to deny any activity on this. Um, the idea that there hasn't been anyone who's stepped up in 20 years. This statement makes perfectly good sense to maintain green space, to maintain the, what is a very, I think, fragile, um, zone there. I mean, especially with the ever-present higher and higher tides, the current walkway is sometimes like actually al- almost underwater. That, but so, yeah, so we need to, we need to coordinate these two.
Passive park section.
Well, he's.
I included it only because I wanted to tell you about that and also. Photos on that. But I mean, I think. Now is the time, if somebody wants to change the comp plan designation, to come and approach.
Yeah.
You say he's going to talk to us next month?
Yes.
Okay.
This parcel's been on the market, like you say, for 20 plus years and the city has not stepped up.
Right, right.
Has this been in the, has, has this been in comp plans for all that, for all that time? Um, and nobody's probably ever really seriously made an offer or tried to develop it. I wonder if it's, this is what my city would at this point?
Man, I think, I think that we've, we've enjoyed a passive park there without owning it as a community.
Yeah.
You know? And as that land has, um, has been degradation to that land through erosion and things like that, it just seemed like over the arc of 20 to 30 years of my. Thinking about that piece of property, less of it's now viable to build. I mean, the slopes and all those other kinds of things. But I mean, someone does own it and, you know.
And they know all of that and they're taking all of that into account. So they're looking at the RPAs and the slopes.
City-owned part of it? City-owned.
The city owns a couple of lots up towards the 199 section. They're looking. They're looking mainly at developing the flatter section, which is the section when you come across College Creek on the right-hand side. That's the largest section that, that's really developable. Looking at their section, that section for their project and then looking at the remaining portions of the property for lots, residential lots. And, you know, they will say that this is type of residential unit that the city needs and doesn't have enough of currently. So that's another, that's another thing that, that's gonna be. But I figured it was an opportunity to give that person 10 or 15 minutes to
Oh, yeah.
An overview of, and we can think whether that's something we want to think about and change this because with this statement in there, I told him, staff is immediately going to say no.
Yeah.
The recommendations, no, because it's totally against the comp plan.
Any further discussion about chapter 11?
Thing that I'd be curious about is if under other facilities, since we're incorporating the WJCC properties, if it would be worth thinking about incorporating like the College Woods and the new trail that's gonna be built along College Woods is sort of they're, they're, they've got a, the trail does a direct sort of transportation, bikeability connection, but it has a recreation value too, certainly, of people using that. And then College Woods obviously has a big recreational value, there are plenty of non-college affiliated people that use that property and
And there's trails through there and all that other stuff?
A lot of trails, yeah. So it would be worth maybe thinking about including that under other facilities, just to note it.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
And I know that there's been, it seems like off and on for, since I've been in the city, which I know isn't all that long, but a, a lot of talk about the potential for Carter's Grove Road to become some sort of regional trail. And I know that previously you've told us that, sort of, there are some sticking points with the county and CW and us and in the negotiations, if, if that's even going to come to fruition. So I'm sure it's not at any stage where it could be in planned improvements, but I wonder if there'd be like, sort of, goals or aspirations towards that in this document if you and the commission would entertain that?
We would get that, I think, in our infrastructure improvement section.
Okay.
Especially with the bicycle section.
Yep.
Because the entire part of that road that's in the city limits is accessible. Past that, in James T. County, or it becomes inaccessible.
Well, currently, Country Road is a private road. City also, because it's not a public street.
I, I drive down that very highway. People live down there.
Everybody uses it, the foundation allows us to use it, but technically, when you go past that little paved area, it's a private street. We are trying to get the cap to cap trail to the city and to the capital is the first thing we're trying to do.
Right.
Doing the, the trail along Monticello helps us, helps us do that. There's one option of it going through campus, which would go down Compton Drive and wiggle through campus. We're actually trying to look at now as trying to do a spur, bring in road and see if we can get it to South England Street. Richmond Road or some of the side streets to get, as another spur to get people
Right, right, right.
It's not just the nature that people ride along and you want to do stops and eat coffee and do those kinds of things also. The boat trail committee is looking at not only Carter's Grove, Country Road, but are there other alternatives? Altitude trail along Route 60. Bring in the cap trail down on your park service is another thought.
And, and talking about the Capitol Hill coming down into the center of town, part of what's come before the Tourism Development Fund in the renovation of the restrooms that are part of the old ticket office area is an option to have it renovated in such a way that there would be like shower facilities there. So if people were doing their bicycle touring, they could actually take a shower and then go eat and, you know, change, or change and all that kind of stuff. So I, I, I appreciate Justin's point, I think it's, it's a good point, that in the additional recommendations, whether it's in parks or it's in infrastructure, or maybe it's in both or something like that, you know, because I, I do think that the cross tab is what makes these kinds of documents really work when they're online, you know? Is, is, that's, that's valid.
Because they hit back, we are currently the historic Triangle Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Right.
Also, three jurisdictions are updating our comp plans, we are also updating the bicycle map. That'll be part of the comp plan also. But I'll add something about College.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything else at this point on chapter 11? So, open forum, Keith, do you have any comments? Nope, okay, cool. Then, Keith, are there any other items that we need to discuss today? Then again, before I say that we're adjourned, again, we're on tap at this point that during our regular hearing week, we will do a four o'clock work sessions as we have no
Work session and canceled the regular meeting.
And that's, so no regular hearing, work session, however, the week of our regular hearing at four. And then next week, when we typically have a work session, it's the Wednesday late afternoon, right before Thanksgiving, at which point we thought no one would want to be having here. So, okay, so we know what we're gonna do in November and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol, thank you, Heather.